The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, January 26, 2016. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone from the Ministerial? Please have a seat. Be heedless tonight. Your whole call, please.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Janine Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered, it's declared their conflict at this time.
I believe I have a conflict with Item 6.2.
I also believe I have a conflict with Item 6.2.
All right. We have two with a conflict with 6.2. That'll leave three up here to discuss Item 6.2. All right. Moving forward, start off with a presentation to Ms. Patricia Hughes. Why not? Please. I have to stand in the middle. They're making me do things in the middle. How you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good. How you doing? I'm doing well.
Great, thank you.
So how long were you on the Planning Commissioner?
About eight years as an alternate and a regular commissioner.
So did you enjoy it?
Oh, boy, did I ever. I loved it. It was an extraordinary experience, great colleagues to work with, and I have a few words for them to say after. Thank you.
Well, very good. Well, this is where, from the City of Riverbank presenting to you, please, in recognition of your service to the City of Riverbank as Planning Commissioner from September 22, 2008, to December 31, 2015. And with that, I want to wish you the best and thank you for your service.
Thank you so much, Mayor O'Brien.
You're welcome. And let's see, we don't have a professional photographer, so we'll have... I know you have a few words to say, and it looks like it's only eight pages. I'll let this right here, I'll let you speak your words, and I'll skip aside.
...coming tonight. I don't think this microphone is on, so you can probably all hear me. But I want to start out by thanking some of the people that I worked with over the years, and especially, most oftentimes, people in public service get a lot of important... In public service, we want to provide the utmost service to benefit our community, and oftentimes, it can be a thankless job. So tonight, I just want to thank a few people that haven't been thanked yet or in a long time. I want to start out by thanking Chris Crifosi. He gave me this original opportunity. Clint Bray, Planning Commissioner, who is not on the Planning Commission anymore, but worked with him. Joan Stewart, Carlos Via Poudoir, John DeGale, Anthony McKenny, J.D. Hightower, John Anderson, and Donna Kenny in the Planning Department. Janet Smallen, Jill Anderson, Annabelle Aguilar. The City of Riverbank employees, and today, Mayor Richard O'Brien, Janine Tucker, Darlene Barbara Martinez, Cal Campbell, and Leanne Jones Cruz. This was a very bittersweet decision for me, not to move forward, but I'm really happy with the prospects as I continue for my future. And thank you so much for all your support. You were, you talk about exemplary. What a, what a group of excellent colleagues, and thank you so much again.
I love me wall. Well, thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you for everyone. Thank you for everybody.
All right. So I leave here, and you come up and do the rest. Item 1.2 is to administer the oath of office to reappoint Planning Commissioner Joan Stewart and newly appointed Planning Commissioners Edward Tobacco and Larry King.
My name is Edward Tobacco.
...the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am
Thank you all. You've got a lot of work to do. Thank you, Annabelle. Item 1.3, Strategic Planning Update.
Mayor, Members of the City Council, it's my pleasure to provide an update on the progress being made in meeting the city's strategic goals. As the council is well aware, but the public may not be as aware, that the council is very committed to the strategic planning process and meets every six months for essentially the better part of a full day to go through the strategic plan and update it accordingly. And in a moment, I'll have the clicker, and I will start reviewing our mission, vision, and goals. Thank you. So as many people have heard me say, the City of Riverbank is committed to providing exceptional municipal services in a fiscally sound and professionally responsible manner for our community. And this drives everything that we're trying to do on a day-in and day-out basis. The vision statement is that the City of Riverbank will be recognized as a premier community where individuals, families, and businesses thrive in a safe and beautiful environment. And that is something that I think we're making progress towards, but we always see room for improvement, and we're looking forward to seeing that vision come through using the core values to drive us as well. The professionalism, transparency, teamwork, respectful behavior, fiscal responsibility, integrity, and ethical behavior. And you'll see those core values weaved through our mission statement as well as our goals. The major three-year goals: to enhance public safety, to improve and maintain infrastructure and facilities, enhance professionalism and customer service, achieve and maintain financial stability and sustainability, and retain and attract business. In the area of the first goal, as you may recall, when we met in the fall, we set forth a number of goals under each goal area. And one of those was for the mayor to conduct an annual nonprofit meeting, faith-based meeting, to talk about issues that were impacting the city. And one of those is the homeless issue. And that issue has also been something part of the focus of prevention by the County of Stanislas. And that meeting was held on the Fourth of November. Also, too, we dealt with the issue of medical marijuana. There was some new legislation that was put into place and effective on January 1st, and we went through that process as well. The next thing was to talk about, what are the reports of the countywide summit on homeless issues? And there was a representative from the county at the mayor's meeting on November 4th, and that's continuing to move forward. We expect the Storage Ship Council to put forth its recommendations sometime on the first quarter of this year. In terms of some of the other activities we're doing, the Disaster Preparedness Plan. This is the year that has been set forth for the County of Stanislas and the cities in Stanislas County to work together to update all of our respective emergency preparedness plans. The drafts that the county would like us to submit to them are due July 1st. We initially hoped to bring this to the council, maybe have this done at the end of March, but we think we're going to need a little bit more time to do that. In addition to that, the police chief initiated a conversation about using video surveillance for use not only by the police, but being able to offer some services that might be available to the city and private businesses and be able to tap into the sheriff. So we know technology is dramatically advancing, and so he is continuing to work on that. So we weren't able to have a presentation for you in December, but he is working on different options for how that might work out in the City of Riverbank. The water meter financing plan, that was approved and is completed, and that project is moving forward. The ADEA Transition Plan, which is required by law, that has also been completed. The Stanislas Tuolumne Groundwater River Basin Association is an organization that the City of Riverbank has participated in and has become incredibly helpful through this drought in being able to look at some of the groundwater issues and be able to have a voice in some of the discussions at the state level. The Stormwater Enforcement Response Plan for illicit discharge, that's going to be coming to the City Council at the end of February. As we've talked about before, stormwater issues are a really big issue and are subject to increasing regulations by the State of California. The training program to implement that program is on schedule to go into effect in April. This evening, we'll actually be discussing this next item, and that is the ESCA, which is the Environmental Services Cooperative Agreement to facilitate a faster cleanup of the contamination left by the Army at the former Riverbank Ammunition Plant, which is now known as the Industrial Complex. As part of that project, there's a need to replace roof and siding. And so, once the ESCA is approved, we'll be able to bring a more definitive report on terms of the grant. But those are, those options, there's two very good options, and we anticipate that we'll be able to do that once we have the final ESCA in place. The smart water meters and the process of ordering equipment now should start being, people should start seeing work being done in the early spring, so in April. And notice of that has gone out to all of the residential customers. We're doing some programs on the website. There's a lot of information that'll be going out, and each individual property owner will get notice right before the work is being done in their neighborhood. And then, something that's been ongoing, and that is looking for funds to improve our wastewater treatment plant. As the council and many members of the public are aware, we just completed an energy conservation project there that also is going to set us up to meet some of the anticipated state regulations, and looking for ways to make the most of that particular plant, particularly in light of the drought, and maybe being able to pursue some recycled water projects. In terms of enhancing professionalism and customer service, our phone system is antiquated. And it's so antiquated that when we went to just get some estimates on doing the phone system, it turned into being a need to evaluate not only RIT system, some of the old programming that's been done. It became three contracts rather than one. And so, that's taken a little bit longer than we had anticipated, but it is scheduled for consideration on February 23rd, which is also the night of our mid-year budget presentation. We'd also planned to do some targeted customer service training for staff, and we actually had it on the calendar, and that needed to move. And realistically, the HR manager position has been in transition. The former HR manager retired in December. The person, the recruitment for the replacement did not end up with a candidate that I thought would be a good fit for the City of Riverbank, and so we need to revisit some of the HR functions. We're in the process of doing that. The organizational culture team came and introduced themselves to the City Council and overviewed their plan for 2016. This is a team that I put together that was under the leadership of the former HR manager, Maricela Garcia, who is continuing to lead that up to be able to just create additional organizational health in terms of teamwork and communication at the City of Riverbank. The next thing was the professional development of the management team. And so, we're looking at some book options to start a book club in February, where we would all be reading the same book and then provide, be assigned, each of us would be assigned chapters to provide a report on that to our colleagues. So, one of the books that we're looking at is "The Advantage" by Patrick Lynchini, which is a gentleman that I heard when I was at the ICMA conference in September. And he just talks about the importance of organizational health and has a really fresh, basic approach to that, which is perfect for a public service agency. In terms of professional and customer service as well, Director of Finance is working on a proposal for providing a low-income senior discount for water and sewer payments. This is something that came out of the discussions regarding the water rates in 2015, and so that is going to be coming back to you in February. We're also looking at ways to formally cross-train a lot of the staff and the public counter. There is informal training has been occurring and will continue to occur, but with the HR manager position being out, in terms of some formal cross-training, we haven't been doing that. But again, I do want to assure the council that informal training is always taking place. In addition to that, something that we've often talked about as a real pressure against the City of Riverbank and all cities throughout the state, and that is the unfunded mandates from the state and from the federal government. And the mandates come down that are very expensive and very demanding in terms of staff time to implement, but there's absolutely no funding associated with that. And one of those is the stormwater program. And so, we're looking at, that we may need to actually add a part-time employee at least, maybe more, to do that. The other thing is we're under a state order to hire more people to deal with water conservation. So these are all things that are not funded, but we are ordered, literally ordered to do them. The process for moving for district elections, that has been completed, and 2016 will be the first year for the implementation of district elections for the City of Riverbank. We have also brought onboard a grant writing contract. The City Council approved that in December, and that group is onboard. We are, this was an interesting objective that was actually taken care of in our water sewer, water and sewer rate fee study for the connection fees. So if there's a need to discuss that, that actually is in our water study. In addition to that, Sue, our Director of Parks and Recreation, is planning to bring back a fee schedule to reflect the need for an equipment replacement fund, and that's on schedule for February 23rd. So there'll be a lot of financial matters being discussed on February 23rd. And there was an objective to submit a grant application for CDBG funding for our parks program for facility renovation. And the Director of Parks and Recreation and our Planning and Building Manager did a lot of work on that and realized that we did not meet the criteria for certain low-income requirements. And so, it looks like our permitting that we're being able to take place now for the number of new permits that we might be able to apply next year. The other thing is that the new financial software, that project is moving forward quickly, and we are looking forward to its implementation. And finance is working very hard to get prepared for the transition from an ancient system to a new system. There's also a discussion about the feasibility of a stormwater assessment district and to make a recommendation to the City Council. This has sort of been incorporated into the CFD discussion. So rather than focusing on a separate stormwater assessment, we've been focusing on the CFD for the new development, since there's so much new development in the city. There was a discussion last spring about what a stormwater assessment district might look like, and we can certainly bring that back. But as the council may recall, that we have hired a company to help us with the CFD, and I think we'll gain a lot of information on that as we go forward. The other thing that we have been concerned about is how to minimize risks that might occur to the city from the assumption of ownership of the former Army ammunition plant known as the Industrial Complex. And so, that is something that's going to be a primary topic for the regular meeting of March 8th. And we are at a point now where we're very close in the process. There's a lot of work being done, which is very, very positive. And we want to just develop a plan for the ultimate, the ultimate goals for that site. And that is something I would certainly want the public to know, that March 8th will be a discussion about the Industrial Complex. There was also a discussion about how do we raise money for things like renovating the community center and the pool locker room and doing additional projects at Jacob Myers Park, when there are not necessarily always grant funds to do that. And the idea was, you know, let's give a fundraiser a shot. Let's give a chance to maybe do something with the specific purpose of raising funds for the city. And so, some initial discussions have happened, and some of those discussions have taken place at the dais. And later on tonight, we're going to be talking about the city's special events, where really, as we've gone through this, I think that the fundraising event may already exist, and that may be the Cheese and Wine Festival. And so, we'll talk a little bit more about that later tonight. The consideration for incentives to encourage new restaurants. The City Council provided direction on that, where we would look at some options to reduce, or at least provide an option for people to meet the FOG program goals in a different way that would be less burdensome. In addition to that, we are working on the North County Corridor Project and proceeding with a plan to annex a portion of property adjacent to the city that would allow us to really maximize the access that will ultimately be provided by the North County Corridor. And that direction was given by the City Council in November. In addition to that, we're working on a plan to update the zoning code. And, you know, we initially thought about providing an update in February, but as we go forward and look about, look at the budget, which has really been the big factor keeping us from doing this, is that what I'd like to do is issue an RFP, get some proposals from different firms, be able to look at their process, and then we'll have a good, we'll have a good idea of how much it's going to cost and what process might look. So rather than bring you an update, what we would like to do is just plan to do an RFP and have that discussed closer to budget and during the budget as a possible additional item. We're also working with the mayor to meet with local businesses to get some feedback with them. We're also partnering with the Alliance. That, we actually had a meeting with a business last Friday. The mayor's been leading that effort and getting some really positive feedback from just the effort to go and talk a little bit about what's going on in our business community. In addition to that, the staff has been talking about a business marketing action plan and thinking that there's a way that we can market the city better and some of our businesses. We're working with the Alliance. This is a really interesting dilemma, because there's that fine line between the private and the public sector, and sometimes, we have to be really careful on how to best utilize our resources and be able to leverage that of the private sector and for them to leverage our resources. So this should be an interesting discussion that we have later in April. The next strategic planning session is Tuesday, April 5th. So we'll look forward to bringing you another update between now and then. And for anybody who's interested in, that is an opportunity. It is a public meeting, and people can watch the City Council deliberate on the strategic goals. So be happy to address any questions, and thank you, as always, for your commitment to this process.
Can you go back one slide, please? I'd like to talk about the LAFCO presentation. Isn't that scheduled for February?
That has, that document has been submitted. The Municipal Services Review and Spear of Influence Update has been submitted to LAFCO. It was submitted last week, and we are hoping to have that on the calendar for February. In fact, I actually have a meeting, the Planning and Building Manager, Donna Kenny and I, actually are meeting with the Executive Director of LAFCO on Thursday.
Any comments, questions? Thank you very much. We're going to move forward to LRAI Item 1.4, Enhance Infrastructure Financing Districts. A financing option for funding redevelopment and future capital improvements.
Yes. Mayor, Members of the City Council, in November, the Executive Director of the LRA, the Analyst for the LRA, Planning and Building Manager, and myself went to a workshop about redevelopment in a post-redevelopment agency era. So basically, how do you do redevelopment? How do you do economic investment with no tools? And the reality is, there's one tool out there that's been enhanced as a result. A lot of cities are looking for some options. While it's not necessarily as flexible as redevelopment was, it does provide the City of Riverbank an option to consider seriously. And it was a very informative presentation done by Jamie Gomez, who is the Principal with Economic and Planning Systems. And he agreed to come here this evening to provide an overview of this process for the City Council. Mr. Gomez specializes in capital facility financing, fiscal impact analysis, government reorganization, and real estate economics. So we're really pleased to have him here this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Thank you for that introduction.
Thank you for that introduction and for the opportunity tonight to come have a brief conversation with you about this new tool. It is the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. I have a brief presentation tonight that I'll walk through, and feel free to stop me as we go through if there's an acronym that I use or a term that I use that you'd like to stop and elaborate, for me to elaborate on. I'd be happy to do that. So there was a tool previously called an IFD, an Infrastructure Financing District, and it is, much like RDA, was a value capture mechanism, but it was very finite in its use and very limited. And in the state of California, even though the legislation had been around for a couple of decades, only three jurisdictions were able to form IFDs. One was down for Carlsbad, one was in for the city and county of San Francisco, and the third was the city of West Sacramento. And those, all three, had unique characteristics. They had a very high share of the tax increment or a very high share of the property tax revenue. So recognizing with the demise of redevelopment and the limited applicability of the old IFD legislation, the legislature got together and passed the EIFD legislation. So this is really kind of born out of both the demise of redevelopment and then also enhancements to the old IFD legislation. But to be clear, it is a form of tax increment financing, so much like redevelopment used to be, it's a value capturing mechanism, which is very conducive for the industrial complex, where the assessed value, you know, prior to transfer is still in federal hands. When it becomes transferred, then you have everything to build on that base. So all the assessed value growth from that point forward could be captured through this EIFD mechanism. So some of the things, as you compare these districts, the EIFDs, to the prior redevelopment agencies or RDAs, there are several enhancements or differences. The first, and one of the most significant, is that there's no findings of blight required. In addition, the EIFD can be formed by an act of a public agency without a vote required. The old IFDs were not permitted within redevelopment project areas. Now the EIFDs can be implemented within former RDAs. You do have to have findings of completion, so there can't be outstanding disputes between the agency and the Department of Finance within that former redevelopment area. The EIFD also extended the term during which the tax increment can be collected, so now it's up to 45 years from the first bond issuance. The boundaries of, unlike RDAs, the boundaries of an EIFD don't have to be contiguous, and the list of facilities that can be funded through the EIFD is greatly enhanced as compared to the old IFD legislation. In addition, as compared to the redevelopment agencies, the EIFDs are not required to set aside a mandatory funding for affordable housing. And in some jurisdictions, that can cut both ways. Certainly redevelopment did provide funding for affordable housing, but because the EIFD has a smaller share of the increment available, not having to carve a portion off for affordable housing makes more available for infrastructure financing. So in addition, the list of facilities that EIFDs can fund, they have to be something that's of regional or community-wide benefit. It can't simply be a backbone roadway that serves a specific subdivision. When you go through the EIFD formation process, a public financing authority is created, and then that public financing authority oversees the development of what's called an infrastructure financing plan. And that plan would forecast how much revenue is anticipated, how that revenue stream could be bonded over a number of years, because it does take time for the increment to grow. And then it would also outline the facilities that were identified to be funded with those revenues. And certainly, the EIFD legislation made more applicability or greater availability of combining revenue sources. And I'll talk a little bit more about what those sources are comprised of. And unlike redevelopment agencies, which required tax increment to be dedicated from the city, the county, all the special districts, with the EIFDs, it's only the increment of the jurisdiction that forms, and then other entities can opt in. So in the case of the city, if you had a willing partner in the county, both agencies could elect to dedicate all or a portion of the property tax increment. So as I mentioned, when an EIFD is formed, one of the first steps is a resolution of intention to form. And that creates a public financing authority, and that financing authority is comprised of members from the city council, and if there are special districts or other taxing entities, they would also have representation. But that public financing authority really creates more flexibility and a lot greater latitude, again, about the types of facilities that can be financed, and more importantly, the combination of revenue sources that the agency can leverage. And these are some examples. Obviously, the property tax increment I mentioned. If there is a former redevelopment area, any money that flows back through from the real property transfer tax fund can come back into the EIFD. Municipalities can also dedicate property tax in lieu of sales tax or in lieu of vehicle license, and then user fees, utility, transient occupancy tax are all eligible revenue sources. In addition, as I mentioned, another enhancement is that individual or multiple jurisdictions can participate. So as an example, you may have a flood control issue, and flooding and protection against flooding is based on hydrology. Where does the water go? It doesn't necessarily follow municipal boundaries. So in this case, if for a flood control solution, you might see a city, a county, and then a reclamation district or another special district all band together under this public financing authority. And that way, they can dedicate revenue streams together. And then another constraint that was lifted is that the physical improvements don't have to be confined within the boundaries of the EIFD. Again, if they're of community-wide importance and have a useful life of at least 15 years or greater, they can be outside of the boundaries, but obviously, there should be some benefit So like other financing tools, the EIFD is not always going to work for every municipality or in every case, so there are some constraints. There are certainly jurisdictions who receive a very small portion of the tax increment, so of the 1% property tax, only a fraction passes back through to the city. And some jurisdictions, that can be a single digit, so 8%, 9%. That property tax is one of the key revenue streams, as you well know, of your municipal service provision. So if you have a low increment and you're using that revenue to fund police, fire, public works, planning, it might be hard to dedicate enough, to have enough power to really enhance the EIFD. And that's the second point here, is that an agency, when they're considering an EIFD, has to weigh those. How much revenue am I redirecting for infrastructure financing, and am I still able to provide an adequate level or the general plan level of services? Another key constraint would be the timing of the needs for the infrastructure financing versus the availability of revenue. These are long-term financing vehicles. Unlike a Melrose CFD, with a Melrose CFD, you will implement a special tax that can be collected right away. With a tax increment financing tool, just as it was in the former redevelopment project areas, it takes time for the assessed value to grow. But as that assessed value grows, it's cumulative, and then you can, down the road, in five, 10, 15, and even 20 years, continue to leverage that revenue stream and sell multiple series of bonds. So basically, when you're selling bonds, you're capitalizing that future revenue stream. So as assessed value continues to grow, your bonding capacity grows as well. And as I mentioned, to form an EIFD, a vote is not required. The city council can take action, or a county board of supervisors can act. But in order to sell bonds, there is a vote required of the electorate within the EIFD boundaries. So if there are 12 or greater registered voters, it's a registered voter election. And unlike a Melrose special tax, which has a 2/3 voter approval, this has a 55%. So it's not as low as assessment district financing, which is 50, but it's at the 55%, which is comparable to school bond issues now.
At this point, if you're looking at voter approval required, within the district, and if the district is industrial, how do you determine your voter? Is it by ownership of a company? Or is it residence for the city within that district?
Yeah, that's a great question. With an area that has fewer than 12 registered voters, it would be a property owner election. So not the businesses themselves, but the property owner.
So, but they don't have to be residents of the city to be the participant in the decision? Okay.
So typically, these are some of the essential characteristics of an EIFD, and typically, this is evolving in terms of how to evaluate EIFDs. But most jurisdictions are looking at it in two phases. First is the feasibility analysis, going through all the factors that I mentioned. How much increment do we have? What's the timing of our improvements? Are they of community-wide importance? All those things that have to be evaluated are probably best done first at an initial feasibility stage. You know, you go through that vetting, that evaluation process, and then at that point in time, if it looks like the EIFD makes sense, then you consider the formal formation process. So really kind of a two-step process, initial feasibility, then considering implementation. So as you're evaluating the applicability of an EIFD, you would look at, the boundary has to be large enough so that you have enough value capture. You'd want to know that the improvements or the vertical development that will create the new assessed value is more likely near-term rather than longer-term, because ideally, you'd want to time it so that the base is set just before the assessed value growth kicks in. So some market analysis should be done to determine, okay, how feasible is this new vertical development? Certainly, you'd want to have a really good idea about the costs of the improvements that were intended to be financed through the EIFD. And as I mentioned, the ability to combine multiple revenue sources together is not only a nice feature, but it's almost mandatory, because these tax increment financing districts obviously have a lag. So you need that bridge financing mechanism to provide some early money, and then the EIFD kicks in and provides a lot more revenue in the longer term. So that combination is really an enhancement. And then, of course, you know, the agency will most certainly, and it's a requirement of the IFD plan, to look at the fiscal impacts to the jurisdiction. So some more detail on the other companion funding sources, and this is not an exhaustive list, but development impact fees, Melrose CFD special taxes, user fees, like water, sewer, utility or electric utility rates, revenue streams from other agencies, like an assessment, say, from a reclamation district. Again, you can partner with, multiple agencies can partner together. You can have cities, counties, fire districts combined together to pledge their tax increment. Within a municipal, let's say a city, the city could also look at transient occupancy tax, sales tax, property tax. All general fund revenues are available to pledge. And then for certain, probably fairly unique circumstances, maybe some state participation, that's more likely in, say, like a regional flood control project or something that, where the state has an interest in protecting future damageable property or exposure. So I have just two slides remaining. So as a jurisdiction evaluates whether an EIFD makes sense, there's several key feasibility issues and key questions that would need to be addressed. So do the infrastructure investments serve a public purpose? Does the tax allocation factor provide adequate capacity to fund the infrastructure investments? So that's the financing plan. Are we aligning the sources of revenue with the uses of those revenues? Are the fiscal effects to the municipality acceptable? By diverting some revenue, can the city still provide adequate levels of service? Is there a strong likelihood that development will occur within a timely manner, thus creating that assessed value growth? Are there other funding mechanisms, particularly early revenue streams, that can be leveraged to bridge the gap between when the EIFD revenues are most likely available? And do the combined financial resources between what the EIFD would pledge and your other revenue sources would pledge, is that enough to pay for the required infrastructure? And then from a municipal investor perspective, these EIFD bonds are untested. So the municipal investors, they know redevelopment agency bonds. They know Melrose bonds. They know GO bonds. You know, they know school district COPs or municipal COPs. So it's unclear exactly how the municipal market is going to view this. We think they will view it much like they did former tax increment financing. That's still yet to be tested. So it's really gauging is the scale and quality of development adequate to attract those investors to buy the bonds. So thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to kind of give you really a 30,000-foot overview. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Everybody up here does. We're going to target a couple of things. Leanne, do you have some questions?
No, I'm good.
I have a question. You've hit around a lot of different things, but I'm not clear on what this is going to cost the people that have to pay it, even though they're, you know, with the increased taxes. Do you have some figures? What it's going to cost the taxpayers, you know, to put something like this together on the average, just roughly?
Sure. Let me clarify. Are you asking how much would it take to form the district? Or when it's in place, how much is a taxpayer paying?
Both, if you can use any estimate.
So the formation process, if you go through the two phases, the initial feasibility and then through formation, could run anywhere from, I would say, $30,000 to $80,000 or $100,000. The impact to the taxpayer, though, is, that's the benefit of tax increment financing. It is taking, it's not an additive tax like a Melrose tax is. So if I'm a homeowner, I pay my 1% property tax, and then I have direct charges like a Melrose district tax or an assessment district tax. Those are additive. This is taking the municipal agency's portion of the 1% and using it to leverage. So it doesn't cost an individual property tax owner more money annually on their tax bill? Yeah. The cost is on the city side by redirecting some of that revenue.
Unlike either the Mills tax or the old RDA.
Right. Thank you.
I just have a question as far as how widely is this being used now?
That was my question.
And is it being used widely in cities of our size?
Yeah, very, very good question. So to my knowledge, no EIFDs have yet been formed, because this is new legislation. It was just passed last year, and then there was an augmentation cleanup bill that changed some of the sequencing to make it in the correct order. But there are a number of jurisdictions evaluating it. So on a scale, I would say it ranges from Los Angeles, you know, which is humongous, for lack of a better term. I know the city of West Sacramento, they have one IFD, but I know they're evaluating an EIFD. The city of Sacramento is also evaluating it. There are several smaller municipal agencies who may benefit. A couple, I think, are about ready to kick off the feasibility stage, but haven't yet. So I think it just runs the gamut. Every situation is unique, and infrastructure financing is typically about how do you put the pieces of the puzzle together? So EIFD by itself is not going to be the solution. It's not the silver bullet. But when you combine it with the other mechanisms available to your jurisdiction, a lot of times, it can work, regardless of the size of your city.
Well, that was my question, too. I was looking for success stories, track records, but this is so new, it sounds like we don't really have any data yet, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Absolutely.
But we do have history. And one of the issues that is out there, does the Department of Finance have any issues with our old RDA, and is that in conflict with the EIFD? And are you familiar with our history with the RDA?
Just, I just know that you did have a former RDA, but I'm not familiar with any specific agreements or disagreements with the wind down.
During the wind down, we... During the wind down, we are defaulting on our bonds to the investors. And I believe the bonds right now are worth about 45 cents on the dollar. As we, you know, get healthier, that will be, more of the investment will be returned to the investor. But I don't think it's going to be close to what they, they determined. So I know that we're in, in process with the Department of Finance. Do we have, do you think we would have conflict?
Mayor, members of the council, I don't think that we would have conflict with this because they're two completely separate entities. And this is a completely different tool. And also, as we're winding down, we are, we're doing our best to be in full compliance with the Department of Finance. And so far, that relationship has been as positive as, as probably any other.
The other, I have a lot more. For some reason, I read an article two weeks ago. I never put together that article in tonight's presentation, which is probably fortunate for you. But I'm, I'm assuming that the safeguard is the lower increment amount to prevent us from overreaching or trying to, say, selling more bonds than what we can use. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's a fair statement.
But with it being non-contiguous, we can do multiple segments, such as, it was proffered as the Ganji plant as well as the industrial complex. But we could also involve, let's say, along the Patterson Road area, some of the industrial groups?
Certainly, there's flexibility to look at multiple areas that don't, that aren't contiguous.
Mayor, I would, I would add in response to your question, while I don't think there's necessarily a legal issue with the state, it probably would be something that the potential bond buyers might look at, even though they are, the redevelopment agency is completely a separate entity from the city, that probably, that could be a factor. And I think that goes to the importance of our market analysis and making absolutely certain that it is a rock-solid financial investment.
One last question, and this is a really simple one. If the city of Riverbank owns the, the property, is that transferable to a new owner?
City owned a parcel?
Let's say the city owns the industrial complex and decides that, okay, and after we establish the EIFD, that we want to transfer that to a private company. Is that transferable? And so, they still get the same protection? Who's on the hook for any defaults? The city or who it transferred to?
Well, the public financing authority that's created through the EIFD, that's the entity that's pledging the revenue.
That would be the city, county, if they're participating. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, LRA board. Individual comments are limited to a maximum of five minutes per person. Each person may speak once during this time, and time cannot be yielded. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Make your comments directly to the city council, LRA staff. Do you have any public comment tonight? Seeing none, we move forward to the consent calendar, consisting of item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of the January 12th, 2016 city council and local redevelopment authority minutes. Item 3C, a resolution of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, approving the interim appointment of Michelle Guzman to the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District Board of Directors as Riverbank representative. Item 3D, a resolution of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, to replace in its entirety the city of Riverbank standard specification design standards and standard plans for section 1 through 8 with new specifications and drawings. Excuse me. Item 3E, out-of-state travel request to attend training for the implementation of Castles, I'm sure that's pronounced wrong, financial management software in Provo, Utah. Item 3F, adjustments to the 2016 city council meeting schedule and closure of city offices from December 26, 2015, I believe. Or was that just 2016?
It's just coming here.
Okay. And through December 30th, 2016. Authorization, item 3G, authorization of out-of-state travel made by the city manager to attend, or she attended, the International City County Management Association Annual Conference in Seattle, Washington, September 2015. Do I have anyone wishing to pool or discuss any of the consent calendar items? Do I have anyone from the public wishing to pool or discuss any of the consent calendar items? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for recommendation.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
My second.
We have a motion to approve in two seconds on the consent calendar.
Council authority member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 61, new business, Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival report.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council, Sue Fitzpatrick, the director of Parks and Recreation, and Chris Ricky, the city's contractor for putting on the cheese and wine, are here this evening to provide an overview of the 2015 event and obtain direction from you in regards to 2016.
Mayor, members of the council, we have contracted with Chris Ricky, presents for the past two years to promote and coordinate our cheese and wine festival. And tonight, Chris is here to give a report on how last year's festival went. And after his presentation, I'll come back up and receive direction on how we might proceed with this year's festival. So invite Chris Ricky up.
Thanks so much, Sue. It's been an honor and a pleasure to work with the city of Riverbank, your staff and your community to put on this event for the last two years here in Riverbank. It's always challenging to put on an event of this size. And every year, we have huge successes. And sometimes, we have some things that don't work quite so well. So that's what we're going to talk about tonight. We're going to talk about what we learned. We're going to give you some event updates. And we're going to talk about revenue growth. What we learned, first of all, the event stayed within the budget that we set, set out initially and required no additional subsidies from the city of Riverbank. Our vendor participation increased in 2015. And we had more vendors that came back with positive responses about being a vendor at the event. Our entertainment was successful. We built on what worked last year. Our Hispanic Heritage Festival area was extremely successful this year. And we built on what we did the year before, and we did even a better job. We added more cultural groups to the area. We added more bands, and it really, really worked out great. We added a skateboarding demonstration this year that was also successful, in addition to the bands, the kids' bands we had and the, then the traditional rock and roll bands that the festivals had previously. We, our alcohol management directives were followed and really successful. We worked hard with the chief and with the police department here in Riverbank to create a safe event, and I think we achieved that. And the wine tasting issues from the previous year were addressed, and we produced an area that worked really well. And we also saw increased revenues from the wine tasting area this year. More about what we learned. Our vendors were successful. Our revenues were up about 4% from 2014, which I think is great. However, based on patron feedback, one of the areas that we really need to work on is increasing the number of artisans and crafters at the festival. And we have some plans to do that. However, it's, it's, it's kind of a double-edged sword. So what we're trying to work out is how we, how we get real artisans and crafters, as opposed to, like, if you put it on your applications, you can have people that, like, are selling, like, cheap sunglasses from China, and they say, well, I'm an art, I'm a crafter. And then, that costs the city money in terms of vendor revenue. Because those are really commercial vendors that should be paying full freight, that are misclassifying themselves and then costing us. So that's one of the things we're working on, to try to get legitimate artisans in here at a reduced price, at the same time, not costing us in the, in the commercial area. And that's, that's what my next point is, is basically, we need to, we need to increase the artisans and the crafters, for sure. But we can't lose focus of the commercial, the commercial vendors, because they make up the majority of our vendor revenue. And so, it's a very important part of our festival, is these commercial booths that you see. Because they help pay for all the expenses at the event. We had some very successful partnerships with nonprofits. We had some, this year, we had some nonprofits that didn't do so well at the event. We had great results with the Kiwanis Club here in Riverbank, Central Valley Community Resources. The Women's Club did a great job running the wine tasting entrance. Cardoza Middle School sold a lot of sodas and did a great job. But we also had to ask a nonprofit to leave the event because they weren't following alcohol directives, and they were serving alcohol in a way that was not safe or legal. We had a partner representing a nonprofit that, that committed to selling some sponsorships for us that never came through. We had a nonprofit partner that was supposed to hand out free cheese to the people on Sunday, and we ended up with a lot of cheese left over because that job wasn't done. So in conclusion, partnerships with nonprofits are critical to the success of this event. But my company needs to take more responsibility in terms of training these nonprofit groups to be successful and to make it work. Because we can't have balls, like, important balls like this dropped, because it costs us money, it costs us success, and we can do better. We're going to do better on it. More event, more improvements for 2016. We've got an event that's cross-shaped. So a lot of times, events, I like to design events in, like, a more rectangular or square shape. But because of the way the downtown Riverbank is kind of designed with the commercial zones being surrounded by residential, a traditional, like, rectangular or square area where you have a natural flow, where people kind of go in a circle, doesn't exist. So we've got a cross-shaped event. It's been successful. It's working. But the way that it really works is you have to have an anchor on each end of the festival. Okay? And so, this year, we had four anchors. We had Hispanic Heritage, we had the carnival and the skate area, we had the car show, and we had the kids' area on the south end. Two of the four anchors were really successful. The Hispanic Heritage did great, the skate, skate park demos and the carnival were really successful. But the car show didn't see great attendance, and the kids' area didn't see great attendance. So it's not to say that the car show and the kids' area need to be removed from the festival, it's just they're not strong enough attractions to be anchors. So what we're going to need to do for this year is find new anchors, which is what we want to talk about here. Anchors are important because they create events within an event. And what that does is it keeps your event from getting stale. So every year, when you do an event, you should be adding new attractions to try to get people excited about your event again. Because if you've been to an event and you've done the same thing every year, it gets kind of, kind of boring and stuff. So if you come up with new ideas, new concepts, you bring new people in, and you're more likely to motivate people that maybe have done it before a couple of times to come back. And so, we've added a few anchor concepts. These aren't for sure or anything, but just some of the ideas we're thinking about. One anchor concept would be doing an Oktoberfest on one block of one end of the festival. It'd be an area that would have German beers, food, cultural traditions, music, you know, and then they'd be, you'd be able to enjoy this stuff on picnic tables and do sing-alongs just like they do in Germany. So that's one concept that we could do. Another concept is like Cheese World. We kind of create a river of molten cheese, where kids can race boats through the Cheese River and sell nachos and grilled cheese sandwiches and cheese fondue. So these are like some of the anchor concepts we're coming up with for this year to try to create excitement about this event. Just as important as all those things is making this thing generate more revenue for the city. And I'm proud to say that a lot of the areas that we have this year did see good revenue growth. Our wine tasting area saw significant revenue growth this year, which is really great. And we think that if we adjust the marketing a little bit, we can increase revenues by 20% next year. Sponsorship revenue was down. We had a problem with a subcontractor. We'll fix that for this year, and we're going to get that money back next year. And finally, vendor income was up, which is good. But we think, since the festival's still going well, we think that we'll be able to raise that revenue even further this year. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Any questions? Any comments?
No, I, I. I was going to say that I felt that it was a success this past year, and I saw the difference from the previous year. So I just want to thank you for your efforts and what you did. And I'm looking forward to another great year. So thank you.
And I agree with Councilwoman Barbara Martinez's comments.
Go ahead.
How was attendance versus the year before last?
I, my estimate is, was it was about the same. Yeah, if, yeah, about the same.
Want to add to the comments earlier. The residents also had positive comments. Very few negative comments from the residents. There was concerns at the beginning, and you were able to work through the concerns and alleviate them. So that, that's good. One of the comments made, and I saw it for the last two years, is that at one area, you have all the food, the other area, you have all the crafts. I don't know if you can mix them up, if there's some issues with having a, one of the, the brats or the vendors right next to artisan. I don't know if there's any issues with that. But having all the food in one area.
It's political, is what it is. Because you, and you probably have experienced this, but if you put, like, the Brock guy on Third Street over by Stanislaus, and then you put the hamburger guy at Third and Tobika, if one of those guys does better, now they're angry and they're, you know, you know, they're upset, and they're, they feel like it's unfair and that they've been, you know, there's been preferential treatment given to one vendor over another, right? Because, and this is why the anchors are so important, right? Because if I screw up on an anchor, now I've kind of made the vendors in that sector of the festival, I've given them a bad spot, and they take that personally. And then, the more bad spots you give out, the less people sign up the next year. That costs us revenue in the next year, because we've put them in a spot where they didn't make as much money as they felt they should. So if I put all the food vendors together, the theory is that, you know, if the festival overall is successful, they're all going to be happy. And if it's not, well, then, I won't have a job anyway, so.
As you're walking down the street, and you, dang, I want a hot dog. And now, you have to walk all the way back, and then, you know, that's, those were comments. I do know.
I'm open to suggestions.
I do know where spottings are. So you take a look at where the premium spots are and charge more.
We're already doing that.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, significantly more. And you would have.
I mean, Sue has the, like, the, you have the vendor sheet, right? She can show you, like, what our premium pricing is if you have input on it.
Yeah, good. So as long as, you know, we're doing that. But I would suggest you mix up the food, make sure that, you know, your beer and your food can be sold anywhere on the location, instead of having it all set in one side with tables out in the heat of the sun, all the way down near 108. So that, that's just a comment.
Yeah.
Other than that, I thoroughly enjoyed it this year, and I'm looking forward to the 40th.
Right on. Yeah, it's going to be a big one.
I liked the changes of the wine tasting part of it myself. And I heard a lot of comments that, that people appreciated the changes compared to the previous year. That's nice.
Would it be possible to add another wine tasting each day? Because they seem to sell quite well, sell out.
I mean, it's against my, like, personal beliefs to do that, just because I, one of the things we want is responsible alcohol consumption. And so, my concern with doing short, you know, periods for, for tastings is that, like, and I don't know if you like wine or not, like, I personally enjoy wine. But when I go with my wife to. I go with my wife to, to try wine, you know, we're gonna, we guess, we're gonna go wine tasting and we want to try, you know, four or five wines, right? So you feel like you accomplished something, you tried four or five wines. Now, if you drink those same four or five wines in an hour and a half versus drinking it over the course of three or four hours, they're, the way alcohol works is, you know, the faster you drink it, the more intoxicated you get. One of the reasons why we were, I think personally, that we were able to, uh, manage the alcohol so successfully the last two years is because we're not putting that gun at people's heads saying, if you want to try four or five wines, you really have to do it quick because you've only got two hours to do it. Here, you've got, you know, basically three hours to do it, there's plenty of time, you can socialize, and I think it, it encourages responsible alcohol intake and that's... Now, in terms of the revenue thing you're talking about though, um, we've always sold a, a percentage of discount tickets, um, and usually more for Sunday than for Saturday because Sunday is harder to sell the tickets. This year, we're gonna be cutting those discount tickets to allow more full-priced tickets to be sold to the public, and that's gonna raise our revenue significantly on this. But...
The extended time cause any concerns?
Uh, I think the extending the time is a good thing, right?
I, I don't know.
I think it was.
There's some people that...
I think, I think, I mean, there, there's a theory that if we had multiple sessions, we would make more money. I'm not sure that's true.
No, no, I'm talking about extending the time of the festival. Didn't we close later?
We did.
Yeah, we did.
And did you find the activity after 5:00 PM intense or was it very slack?
It worked, um, exactly like I thought it would in that people left, um, they'd kind of dribbled out slowly, and by the time eight o'clock rolled around, no one was there. We did get some complaints from vendors saying, it's eight o'clock and there's nobody there, we want to leave. So I don't know, I mean, I may, I gotta talk to the chief about it, but I may want to switch that back to seven, you know, because to make the vendors a little happier, but safety's the number one concern, so if, if eight o'clock worked really well this year and if the chief says that's the right answer, then I'm gonna stick it as it is.
Any comments from the public? Okay, on this, all we do is just accept the report, we have no action on this?
Yeah, um, I think the, the general direction is to proceed and we just want to confirm that we're on the right track and the council's supportive of us proceeding with 2016.
All right, I believe you got the direction that we're looking forward to the 40th.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, item 6.2, Farmers Market Update and Fee Waiver Request. And at this point, we have two people who are leaving the dais.
And for purposes of the record, um, council members Campbell and Barbara Martinez are members of the Chamber of Commerce as non-voting board members and are participating in the, uh, the committee that is putting on the Farmers Market for 2016. Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation, will provide an overview of the submittal from the Chamber of Commerce in regards to their request for a fee waiver to conduct, uh, Concerts in the Park and Family Night Out at Farmers Market in 2016.
Mayor members of the council, um, we did receive a, um, special event request for the Farmers Market, which they have changed the name now to Concerts in the Park, Family Night Out at the Farmers Market, um, to kind of give an idea of, of that they do have a lot of things going on, um, at the Farmers Market. Um, and in that, uh, application packet, there was a request for the fee waiver. Just the general information, uh, the dates of the Farmers Market would be Wednesdays beginning May 18th through, um, going through September 7th, so there's about 18 Wednesday nights. Um, the times would be 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Uh, when movie nights occur, which would be June through August, the time would extend to 11:00 PM. This again would be at our community center park. Some of the events that they have, uh, mentioned in their application is live music, Zumba, bounce house, kids' safety night, car shows, wine tasting in the community center, um, on, I think, five of the evenings, cooking demonstrations and various other activities. So the fee waiver request, uh, would involve the community center rental for those evenings, the park aid fees, site monitor fees, bounce house permit fee, noise permit fee, and all of those total up to $1,500. And if the fee waiver was approved, we would ask that the money be transferred from the general fund to the enterprise fund, uh, for the current fiscal year in the amount of $589 and then next fiscal year, um, $911. And Garnett Martin, uh, who is the market director is here, I think, oh, to answer any questions if you have any specific questions for her or if you want to say something, I don't know.
You did great. This year, and I'm gonna take some verbiage from Rick, Chris Ricky, uh, we learned a lot from last year. We did have a couple of issues that, um, came up. We were in competition on the same night as Oakdale, uh, which at the last minute we had heard they were not going to move back to Thursday evening. So that did create issue with our farmers because we both draw from the same farmer pool, um, and we were too far into our season to correct that. So we did have a lot of issues with, uh, we had either people there and no farmers or farmers and no people. This year, our goal is to correct that problem as best we can. I have gone to various other farmers markets throughout the state of California. I have found that some of our, um, surrounding neighborhood cities as Stockton and Lodi, some of their farmers go, um, as far south as LA and as far north as Davis, so they're willing to travel with their produce. So this year, we're, we're attempting, and I'm in conversation with a couple of Lodi farmers that would, that are not in any of the other markets here in our county. So we would not be competing against Modesto or Oakdale or Patterson where we're all asking for the same farmer, come bring your produce. We have right now, uh, three farmers committed to come and, uh, we do have our, uh, Market Match Grant that this will be the second year. That started off very slow last year because, uh, with any grant and it being a federal grant, we had a lot of rules we had to follow and our hands were tied to our market opened and we couldn't tell anybody because of the rules in the grant. Because we're in a continuing part of that grant, we don't have that problem. So I've already got our flyers made, um, which will go into poster size. We're gonna try to just really plaster that all over Riverbank, get the word out that we have the Market Match, we are doing a Farmers Market. This year, we're gonna extend the movies through August. We didn't do movies in August last year because school starts and, um, being a parent, I just thought that wasn't appropriate, but I was amazed at how many people came all through August and said, what's our movie tonight? So that told me parents were okay, um, because we did invest in a very high-tech projector. We're able to start the movies before it actually gets dark and so therefore we end the movie by about 10, 15, 10:30 at the latest. So that still gets the kids home on a school night, um, in a fair reasonable amount of time. So we think that's gonna keep our families coming. Once the movies did stop last year, our families quit coming. So, um, we're also working on additional food vendors to try to get a good variety. We, we really, our goal as the chamber, we want to see this become a family event that each family in our community looks forward to, that this is their time, they can come to the park, enjoy the beautiful park we have to offer and, um, participate in different functions that we have, vendors, um, eating out, watching a movie, and just, just really make it a great community event. So those are our goals, um, this year. With the music and the movies and the bounce houses and all of the extra things that we're, um, bringing to the market, our budget is about $6,000. So we are asking, you know, for the fees on your side to help us to be waived so that we can continue to hopefully make this one of the best Farmers Market around.
On the, uh, community center rental fees, how often would the community center be utilized? Is that each week?
Each week, uh, for about an hour and a half, maybe a little bit longer on the nights that they do wine tasting.
And in wine tasting, will there be fees associated with wine tasting? Do I have to pay to go in?
No. Um, per, uh, the state law that was passed, um, we cannot charge ABC because then you have to wait with your license. So the wine tasting is, if it's complimentary, it just has to be under control of guilty and no one under 21.
And ABC will be visiting, I'm sure, because they visit up...
Actually, they don't, they don't care, uh, because it's a Farmers Market and Governor Brown, this is his baby and he made very liberal rules. One of them was you can't charge and two, nobody underage can, uh, attend or be in the building with it. Um, pardon? And there's a time limit. It can't, you know, we, we can only have an hour. So the hour and a half we asked for is really for, you know, 15-minute setup and 15-minute teardown, so the actual wine tasting. And you can only have up to 15 hours. There's no possibility anybody's going to get in touch with that, that's the problem there.
And we have a city staff person there assigned to the community center on those nights.
And we do personally check ID.
Any questions, comments? So any questions or comments from the public?
Good afternoon or good evening, uh, City Council. My name's Anthony McKinney, the new elected, um, Chamber of Commerce of Riverbanks President. I'd like to speak in favor of our, um, event that we'd like to put on and make it a signature event for the city of Riverbanks sponsored by the, uh, Chamber of Commerce. We are in the business of increasing business and business relationship and commerce within the city. And we feel that this particular activity gives businesses an opportunity to give back to the community and the community to, um, have an opportunity to see that what they put into the city, it comes back to them and they have an opportunity to sit back and relax. We do call it a Farmers Market, but it's really a family and friends night out. And we giving everybody an opportunity to get out, relax and have a good time. And it benefits the city as well as it benefits the businesses and the Chamber of Commerce to build a, a more cohesive environment, which is sponsored and, um, helped funded by the city, by the businesses within the city. So with this extra help from the city, we'll be able to move forward with that. With our new administration in hand, we learned from this particular Farmers Market that we put on before. We had, uh, no benchmark really to measure by what our, um, pitfalls or our, um, or our achievements were then, but now we do. So we know what our, uh, what our costs are, we know what our, uh, what our involvements are, we know what our, um, aggressive, uh, teamwork needs to be in order to make this successful. So we asked the city to help us to, uh, move forward with this because we will all benefit
No further public comment. I'll bring it back to the council for a recommendation then or action. Uh, I want to advise the council that for this to be approved, all three of us have to, uh, agree to it. Are there any comments, questions?
I'd like to just make a comment. I would like to see this be successful and I, I know in the past I've kind of struggled with, with us supporting, um, and continuing, um, giving money out of the general fund and using money from the general fund. Might I throw a suggestion out there? And I can only equate it to my employment. Um, we have situation, I'm a school teacher, and when we have students that need some extra help, um, i.e. one-on-one or some extra body in the classroom, we have to provide a fade plan of that assistance because it's a huge expense, um, on the school district. So the school district requires us to have a fade plan of that extra help. How are we going to fade out, um, the continual use of this extra person for this student? What are we gonna do to make them successful? And it's just kind of a thought, it just kind of came, came to me as I was sitting here, um, and I remember the mayor commenting last year, he really wanted to see this work and I think we're all behind that and I don't want to at all come across like I, I don't want this to happen. It's just hard sitting up here, um, making decisions to continue using stuff out of the general fund. And so might I make a suggestion that we think of some way to create some sort of a fade plan of the assistance of monetary funds coming from the, from the general fund to, um, move this forward? So I don't know if that's kind of some food for thought, um, but, you know, if, if you need this much this year and then next year you need more, I think, uh, me personally would like to see the, the roles reversed, if you can kind of see where I'm getting at. So that would be my only comment.
We're, we're not discussing it, it's up here, we're discussing it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, one of the thing, I feel more confident, I feel more confident in this presentation on the Farmer Market than I did the last two. So I, I feel that it's worth the risk to, um, to go forward. I'm looking at 2019, 2020 when our reserves are down to 3.6%. So this has a big impact, but this being, I believe, an, uh, a total event that can, uh, enhance a lot of the community and community involvement, I believe that, uh, we should at least give it one more shot. I don't think if it's, if it has the same success as last couple of years, I don't believe it'll have us, have a ear to fall on next year.
I, I would agree with their comments. I think we're all pretty much the same place.
Okay. Asking for a, uh, recommendation?
I'll move that we approve item 6.2.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to approve and a second on item 6.2.
Councilmembers Joan Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
Be careful, Darlene, don't want you tripping. Item 6.3, Citywide Special Events Planning.
Mayor members of the city council, this is the third of three items related to citywide special events, and this evening we again have Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation, to provide an overview of, um, tonight's item and to obtain your direction.
Mayor members of the council, uh, the Parks and Recreation Department are in the process of planning for our spring and summer programs and events. So tonight, the events that we wanted to, whoops, talk about, whoops, and, uh, get some direction on is, are, are the ones as listed here, Riverfest at Jacob Myers Park, The Color Run at Jacob Myers Park, Memorial Day Remembrance Ceremony, and a Multicultural Day or Fiesta Riverbank Celebration in downtown Riverbank. So I'll kind of go through these slides and then, um, as we go along, uh, maybe we can receive some council direction and input. Riverfest was formerly Beyond Earth Day and for the past two years, we've had Riverfest down at Jacob Myers Park. And we kept some of the Beyond Earth Day components into the event. And we kept some of the Beyond Earth Day components into the event. The weather was not good to us over the past two years, so it rained the day before, and I don't know if that had some effect, but it was a very fun event and a very nice event, but the numbers were low, attendance was low, kind of too low than what we would hope. So we wanted to kind of talk about that a little bit. The Color Run that Carrie implemented, our recreation supervisor, was very successful down at Jacob Myers Park, and they had close to 100 runners the first time, and they had to stop it at that. So I think it could have even been more successful. So the idea is if we went with Riverfest again, is to maybe do both of those events on the same day. And we looked at what else is going along around in the county and figured April 30th might be a good day to have the two events and just help increase the attendance at Riverfest. So that's one thought. The other new event that I know the mayor has mentioned would be nice is a Memorial Remembrance Ceremony, and this would be held at our community center park near the Veterans Wall. The date would be Monday, May 30th. The time would be 11:30 to 12:30. And some of the highlights might be a military band, a 21-gun salute, light refreshments, and, you know, we'll kind of brainstorm on what that event might look like. But this event would recognize the citizens that have sacrificed their lives for our country. Another idea that we've kind of been talking about, doing is some type of Multicultural Day or Fiesta Riverbank in downtown Riverbank. Fiesta Riverbank did occur about five years ago, and we weren't in charge of the event, but city staff came to the event and saw it, and saw that it was potentially a very popular event. It looked like the community was having a good time, it looked well attended. I don't know that the event did very well financially, but it looked like it had some potential. So that's kind of stayed with us in our mind, especially with the downtown, you know, just the ideas of maybe expanding some things going on downtown. So the question is, is there an interest to do one of these events in the future? Would we, this be something we contract out, like we do the Cheese and Wine? Or is this something we would try to do on our own with the Parks and Recreation Department staff? As far as the financial impact with Riverfest, we do have some good sponsors, and there wouldn't be any impact to the general fund. We have a balance of $3,900 in the account at this time, which would do fine for this next year's event. Memorial Day Remembrance, it would be minimal impact to the general fund. We have some money in our existing budget that we would be able to put towards that. And we can try to get some sponsors, and once we figure out the cost of the event, we can see where we are, but it would be minimal funds from the general fund, if any. The Fiesta Riverbank or Multicultural Day being a new event, we would be probably looking, if council gave direction, to really kind of brainstorm on this, look at next year. We were hoping to do something in June, but we're getting pretty close to that. But we would need to budget some seed money to get that started, whether it be contracting out the event or just staff cost for us to do it. And then hopefully the event would pay for itself, and we would be able to give that seed money back like we have with the Cheese and Wine Festival. So those are just some thoughts, and we were hoping to get some council direction. Our kind of recommendation that we were hoping council might consider is to go ahead and try Riverfest one more time, see if attendance is better than it was in the past, maybe the weather will be better for us. Have it with the Color Run, Saturday, April 30th, and then reevaluate after the event. Go ahead and hold the Memorial Day Ceremony, because that would be an easy thing to do. Fiesta Riverbank, Multicultural Day, like I said, explore the possibility for the future event, and taking into consideration the funds needed, sponsorships, contract possibilities, staffing levels, et cetera.
And I would just add one more thing, sort of wrapping the three staff reports together. And that is, there had been some discussion as well in the strategic planning session and in the update about a fundraiser and looking at a fundraiser. And in light of the council's support for the Cheese and Wine, the chamber taking on the family concert night, for lack of a, combine that a little bit, and looking at the recommendation would be to continue with the Cheese and Wine and focus on that as the fundraiser, and do Riverfest and/or any other event, including the fall events, as community events, not necessarily to raise funds above and beyond what was necessary to keep the event going, but to really build on the revenue potential of the Cheese and Wine, and then focus on the community events. So just asking for, we threw that out there for, to start the conversation, to get some feedback from the council on where you're at on the special events.
Well, I liked the recommendation of doing the Riverfest and the Color Run together. I also had heard great things about the Color Run, and how well it was attended. My nieces were upset because they didn't get a chance to participate. So I will let them know, April 30th. And the Memorial Day Remembrance, I think, will be very well appreciated by the community. This is something that I know we've been thinking about doing. And I agree that the Fiesta or Multicultural Day, we should just take a look at how we can put that together for next year. So I agree with the recommendations.
Likewise, I think we need to stay with what we have, cultivate them, try to make them better, Riverfest, the Cheese and Wine, make them more profitable. One of the things that bothers me, if we were to start a whole new event, I know it would take a lot of hours from our city employees, and cleaning yourself, Sue, and I don't think you have that time anymore, with the amount of time you're putting into other things. So I agree with Councilman Martinez that we should take your recommendation.
Any public comment? So you're not bringing it back? You, I'm sorry, I-
That's okay.
-stepped on you as I was-
That's okay.
There was a pause.
Yes, there was a pause.
I don't like pauses.
I'm sorry. I apologize for my pause. I'd like to see us build on the successes of the Color Run. I think that's a successful event, we should build on that and make that the event, and then Riverfest maybe, you know, with Color Run, you know, emphasizing Color Run. The Memorial Day event, I think, is great. I think we should definitely do that, no question. I do have some concerns about Fiesta Riverbank. I was part of the Sister Cities Committee that I believe is the event that we put on for the 16th of September a few years back, before talking about the same event. There were some issues with that. I'm concerned about city staff being involved. There was a lot of things that took place that maybe we wouldn't want necessarily to have happen again, and we can go into those details later. But I do have some concerns about that, and it would be a lot of work to put that on, and I think that it would, you know, I don't think we have the staff that we can dedicate to that right now. So we would need to really consider how we could possibly do that in the future. I'm not saying I'm against it, I just think that it would take a lot more thought and planning.
And maybe there's a nonprofit group that may want to put that together. We can also put that out there, too.
But if the city's going to be sponsoring, we need to make sure it's done correctly.
Correctly, yes.
You have a comment?
No, I kind of agree with everything that's been said. I like the Riverfest and Color Run put together. Recommendation here.
I agree with the recommendations on the events for the 30th of April and also Memorial Day Remembrance. On the multicultural event, since there is a large portion of it going to be used for the Cheese and Wine, if that can not be limited, at least initially, figure out if that can be expanded, because I was involved with a lot of it down there, and I truly appreciate it. I even got to speak Spanish. But the horse events, fantastic, the dancing, the multicultural event, you know, that seemed to run itself. And that was outside, it was inclusive to the Cheese and Wine, because it was associated, but it could have been expanded, could have had much more in the event of multicultural entertainment. If that can be expanded, that probably suffice for Fiesta Day or Multicultural Day. And if it gets huge, then it could be broken off. But right now, it had a good fit, and it needs to be expanded as much as it can possibly do. That is my opinion, my guidance. But the guidance is, I remember, I think that we're all guiding along the events that you have, and for this year, we do not need to have a separate event for the Fiesta Riverbank or the Multicultural Day. Is that muddled enough?
I got it.
Mark, April 30th on your calendars and May 30th on your calendars. And just for the public, again, this is our spring and summer there. At this time, there's still plans to do the hayride, if there's enough interest in people coming out and doing the various venues, as well as the parade.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Item 6.4, authorize the city manager and the local redevelopment authority executive director to finalize negotiations and execute an environmental services cooperative agreement that will remediate, win, or remove contamination to real property at the former Riverbank Army Ammunition Plant. I believe this is being changed to-
We are going to change the recommendation. We would like the recommendation, we'll bring it back, because there'll be some negotiations on the final price, and we think it's appropriate to bring it back for you to know what we're-
And we can hang something over their head.
Yeah, the magnitude of this contract, it just makes sense to bring it back for a final council blessing. So we're requesting authorization to go ahead and execute, but to bring it back for the final blessing for you, for the council. And Debbie Olson, our executive director of the Local Redevelopment Authority.
Good evening, Authority Chair, Vice Chair, and members. I'm going to talk to you about something that we've been waiting a long time for, that is the Environmental Services Cooperative Agreement. For those that aren't aware of what this is, it is an agreement, federal government can enter into agreements with local agencies, in this case, it's the Local Redevelopment Authority, and obtain services in carrying out, in this case, investigation and cleanup of contamination at the former Riverbank Army Ammunition Plant. The key participants involved in this particular ESCA are regulatory agencies. They provide the standards and processes for cleanup. The Army who is involved, they have limited involvement after the grant is awarded, but it's funding and oversight, and the LRA/City will remediate, will take care of the remediation activities, the sampling, and their final reporting. So this is not our first ESCA. We did have an ESCA number one. That ESCA removed and disposed of over 5,000 tons of contaminated equipment. This was all Army surplus property. We started that in September of 2013 and ended it. The final report has actually been complete for almost a year, and we're waiting for the Army and regulatory agencies to sign off. We received 11.9 million for that. This particular ESCA number two, this project will remediate and remove PCBs from real property, or structural elements of the buildings, roofs, siding, concrete soil. It'll also involve cleaning out the stormwater system. The work itself, the remediation work, we expect to take about 30 months. But again, as I explained before, there is a final reporting period where those reports are reviewed by a variety of agencies, and that we expect to take, could take up to five years, 60 months. We have estimated the cost of this ESCA for the work that will be required to be done. We've given the Army an estimate of 42.7 million. So what will we be doing for that 42.7 million? I'm sure everybody would like to know what those ESCA details look like. So I've done kind of a little cheat sheet. I do have some, a little fuller explanation of the details for anybody that would be interested in the public. But roughly, it breaks up into two different sections, kind of what's done inside and what's done outside. The EPA is the Oversight Agency, but it's actually TOSCA, which handles PCBs specifically. And I've got two complicated acronyms up there. CIRCLA is the Comprehensive Environmental Response Compensation and Liability Act. That's what's happening outside with soil, and then the TOSCA will handle the PCBs inside. So we've broken it up a little bit into two parts. The first part, which is the larger part, is cleaning buildings, construct the production areas and some of the other buildings. We've estimated 31 million for that. And the second part is more external, about 8 million. The LRA will receive a program management fee, and we have estimated that at 2.7 million. So that's where we came up with our total estimated cost of 42.7 million. I will tell you, the process is, we provide the Army with our estimates, and then there is a negotiation. The negotiation is ongoing right now. We've received some questions back from the Army on how we arrived at our costs, and to be sure, it's taken us two years to come up with accurate costs for these things. And so in all fairness, I will say that the final award may not be 42.7, but it will not exceed that. It will probably, in all likelihood, be negotiated a little lower, but this is where we, this is where the LRA thinks it should be. Let me give you a few benefits of this cleanup. Clearly, cleaning up environmental hazards in our community is a plus. After it's cleaned up, it will allow for existing businesses and new businesses to come to the Riverbank Industrial Complex and site there. It meets the community reuse plan goals that we set in 2006, 2007, and it will provide additional leasing opportunities as we clean things like cranes and some other equipment. It will be able to be utilized by tenants and others. We do require in our contracting, in our subcontractors, that they hire and train local workers. We anticipate 30 or so local workers will be trained to do this work, and it will be full-time over three years, as I mentioned. And we anticipate utilizing local trades and businesses for things like roofing, painting, construction work, very technical things. We aren't going to require local hires, because some of that's, quite frankly, can't, we can't find the expertise locally, but we will hire as many as local contractors as possible. This also funds the LRA agency, and so we anticipate running our agency with these administration funds, and also offsetting some city staffs that will be utilized, finance, the city manager, et cetera. There are some challenges and some risks to this. This contract is called a fixed-price contract, which means there's no contingency. We have to estimate correctly, and if it isn't within that estimate, then we still have to do the work, and the financing for that will come from revenues from the LRA in all likelihood. It is not anticipated it will come from the general fund. But as you know, there are limited LRA resources, and the second thing is, the Army is obliged to remove and remediate hazardous waste, but that means taking roofs and siding off. They are not obliged to put that roofing and siding back on, so the LRA will be having to put the siding back on. We have developed a preliminary plan for funding that. We have engineered estimates on what it will cost, and we have approached two granting agencies for what we don't have in reserves or what we can't garner from revenues, site revenues. We most certainly expect tenant disruption and business interruption. We have, we did get business interruption insurance for this, but, you know, it's just like when you go to renovate a house, you may be very excited about the renovations, but when they start tearing apart your kitchen and you have no place to eat, it's really not such a happy time. We are doing everything we can to minimize those, and we have individual meetings, we have done several individual meetings with tenants, and we will do that ongoing and work with them very closely to minimize any problems. The last thing I do want to mention is, there is an assignment of risk. This is a contract between the Army and the LRA for services, and they will assign some risk to- risk to us for that remediation. We pass on that risk to our environmental contractors, and we require insurance, et cetera. So I don't want you to think this is without risk, but we do pass that risk on, and we have attorneys that are very skillful in helping make sure that we minimize as much risk as possible in this process. So that is it in a nutshell. Again, we will bring it back when we have finalized negotiations, but I did want you to be aware, and the public to be aware, of what was happening. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, I had just a quick one. The soil that they removed, did they tell you what they do with that when they remove it? What do they do with it? The soils, well, the soils as an aggregate, they'll test them, and they can either go to in-state or out-of-state landfills, depending on the levels of PCBs found in the soil. The same with, you know, with the equipment we found, when we tested the equipment, some equipment couldn't be put anywhere in an in-state landfill, and so it was sent out of state. What we intend to do on the structural, because we can't really remove the structural steel, we will be cleaning and taking all the paint off. You know, we're talking about PCBs that primarily have come from the exfoliation of the siding or the deterioration of the siding, like skin. And so wiping it off, spraying, cleaning it off, using solvents to clean it off is how we expect mostly to dispose of these PCBs. And then those rags, of course, will go to a landfill. The soil itself, as I said, will probably depend on the testing, where it goes. There are places out of state that will take it if it's high, and then in-state if it's low.
Any questions or comments from the public? Saying that, I'm bringing it back, and I'll make the recommendation to authorize the city manager and the local redevelopment authority executive director to conduct negotiations and achieve a tentative concurrence on an environmental services cooperative agreement that will remediate and/or remove contaminations to the real property at the former Riverbank Army Ammunition Plant.
That was skillfully done, Mayor.
And I...
I'll second that motion.
We have a debate in two seconds.
Counsel Authority members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7, 7.1, staff comments.
Mayor members of the City Council, we'll start off with Donna Kinney, our planning and building manager.
Good evening, Council. I would like to extend a hearty congratulations to my new planning commissioners and share with you some training opportunities that we have for them that are coming up. First of all, is the 39th Annual Stanislaus County Planning Commissioners Workshop. It is open to planning commissioners, city council members, and interested members of the public as well. If you're an engineer or, you know, related to the housing trade, you're more than welcome to attend. There is a small fee, but a light breakfast is included as well. And this 39th Annual Training is Saturday, February 27th, and it's the morning, 8:30 to noon. It's in Modesto at the Harvest Hall. The second opportunity we have is the League of Cities Planning Commissioners Academy, and I'm hoping most, if not all, of the commissioners will attend. I will be going to give them a helping hand. This will be held at the San Ramon Marriott from March 2nd through 4th of this year. It's a great training opportunity. They'll get a chance to look at a plethora of different topics that might pop up at our meetings. And then, third, which is new, I just got this today, the Stanislaus County Planning Commission is having a workshop on February 4th at 6:00 p.m., and it'll be in the joint city-county chambers in Modesto. And there will be a presentation from a noise consultant. And so that might be, it's open to the public, and that might be something that some of our citizens are interested in. February 4th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Sue Fitzpatrick?
Mayor members of the Council, just a quick report. We did have a dog park task force meeting over the weekend, and we, this is something we've just been kind of hearing that some members of the community would like. And for the past year, we've been having meetings here and there, and we've been having some potential sites we've been looking at. So what the plan is, is to have another meeting March 31st, publicize it real well, and see how many people attend, to kind of really get an idea of what the community need is. But the site that we're kind of leaning towards is north of the Riverbank Army, wait, the Riverbank Industrial Complex. And there's some land there, I'm not sure how many acres, probably about three, Debbie?
It's, yeah, about three and a half.
About three and a half acres, which would be perfect, that would be available to the city once the ownership transfers to the city. And that area, there's no residential. We'd be able to design the parking the way we want, design the park the way we want. It just seems like the ideal site, and then we would actually own the land. One of the other areas we were looking at was Hetch Hetchy, which we still might want to lease for some trail-type things at some point, but the idea is maybe that's just too complicated for a dog park, and we would have a lot of restrictions on that. Also, it runs along Black Sands Parkway, and there's some houses that are a little bit close. So, anyway, just to let you know, we'll be looking at that, trying to really see if there is a community need, how many people are willing to work together on that. That would be based on basically fundraising and grants and things like that is how we would develop that. But just a heads up on that.
Annabelle Aguilar, our city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I just wanted to announce that the Riverbank Representative Seat on the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District Board of Directors is currently open. It's a four-year term, beginning this January, and will end in December 2019. The recruitment opened yesterday, and it will close on Tuesday, February 16th. So we're taking applications right now, which can be obtained through our website, the city website, and our department. Thank you.
And Mayor members of the City Council, some news I reported to you earlier. I got feedback from staff in regards to answering a question that's come up a number of times, and that is, when will the other restaurants be opening up at the new building at Crossroads there at the corner of Clarabelle and Oakdale? And I've got great news. Dicky's Barbecue is supposed to open up pretty much any day. They have got their final inspections done, they're just training their staff. Chipotle is actually planning to move forward, even in the midst of their various issues, and they may actually be open by March 1. And Five Guys is scheduled to be open by April 1. So things are moving right along. And for the one or two people who maybe haven't been to Panda Express, it was fabulous, and the lines are long, so you gotta, you know, scoot your time there, but it was really good. So we're looking forward to seeing that, that particular section just being a great addition to the Crossroads Shopping Center. And that concludes staff reports this evening.
Thank you. Counsel Authority members, Councilmember Leon, Jones Cruz.
Thanks. I just wanted to congratulate the Citizen of the Year winner, the Business of the Year winner, and the Youth of the Year winner. The Moikoi Dinner was a really nice event. It was really nice to see those folks that give so much to our community recognized for their, for their service, and it was a really nice, nice job. Congratulations to them. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
I agree with Councilman Jones Cruz. The Moikoi Dinner went very well, it was nicely ran, and I enjoyed it terrifically. But something happened this week that I want to share with you just real quick. I was at the League of Cities Committee that I belong to, Employee Relations, up in Sacramento, and I met a guy from the council down in Saratoga. He's a techie, even though he's on the council. I told him about our Galaxy Theater and that we're going to have 3D, and you should have seen them perk up. They couldn't believe that Riverbanks is getting something like this. So it's gaining a lot of attention, and with that attention, I'd like to encourage you folks, if you know people that have businesses or want to open up businesses that might be beneficial to the community, other restaurants that are on it, pass the word. And likewise, we have the Stanislaus Business Alliance here in our community. They can help businesses get started in a variety of ways. They can help existing businesses improve, and I would like to see us make more use of that particular organization because we belong to it. So pass that around to your businesses and to anybody else.
Thank you. Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Okay, I'm going to attempt to read this. My eyes are not working tonight, but I just wanted to let everyone know that I attended the Institute for Local Government Workshop, and this was regarding immigrant engagement and integration in the Central Valley. And the purpose of the workshop was to engage in a dialogue and to help the local governments to come away with key takeaway ideals for our communities. And I also attended with Councilmember Calcalmo the first meeting of the year for the League of California Cities, and I'm on the Community Policy Committee. And one of the main strategic goals that we're going to be looking at for 2016 was homelessness. And I want to personally say thank you to Patty Hughes for her service to the Planning Commission, for all her many years of service, and also to the city. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I agree. The Moikoi event was a great event, thoroughly enjoyed it. Congratulations to all the nominees, as well as to all the winners. And congratulations to our new planning commissioners. And thank you to our outgoing commissioner, Patty Hughes. And that's it for me tonight.
Thank you. I too want to congratulate the new members of the Planning Commission. Again, you do have your work cut out for you for this next couple of years, and thank you for your service. Again, to Commissioner Hughes, thank you very much. I know she's not here, but she does have my respect and my congratulations for the job that she has done. Other areas, you know, I've seen that the support provided by the staff has changed somewhat, and I didn't realize that it could get any better, but it has been. I want to thank the staff for your support over the last, at least the last six weeks for me personally, as well as preparations for the state of the city, which hasn't been mentioned, but I'm sure you all are aware that it's going to be on the 24th of February, and you're all are invited. I also like to, looking at other websites and what are available to them through other cities, if you go to Phoenix, not that you have to go to Phoenix to look at it, but, or some of the other ones where the websites are quite dynamic, ours have the potential to become as well as great, and I'd like to employ all the departments to see how you can better put your information out there and get better interaction with the public. With that, we're going to go on to closed session with, we're going to eliminate LRA item 8.1, which is Conference with Real Property Negotiators. We will go to item, LRA item 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code 54956.9 Alpha. Name of case in regards to AQH LLC, DBA Aquifer LLC. United States Bankruptcy Court, Northern District of California, case number 15-50553 ASW11. Item 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Subdivision Bravo of Government Code 54956.9, one potential case. The public has the ability to comment on any of these, even item 8.1, and if you do, you have up to five minutes to comment. Do I have any public comment? With that, we're in closed session. Thank you. Number nine, report from closed session, LRA item number 9.2, Report on Closed Session, LRA item 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. Direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.3, Report from Closed Session, Item 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation. Direction has been provided to staff. With that, this meeting is now adjourned.